Call to order and recording of members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement read.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education at the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting.
Consent agenda, all of the following items which concern reports on items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a special or a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. 3.1, items of new, any new business to the agenda?
There is none.
3.2, minutes of the July 6th, 2020, regular meeting and the July 29th, special board meeting. Approval of the finance report, approval of the activity for fund report, approval on the activity fundraisers, and approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers.
So we'll begin with our minutes of the July 6th, 2020, regular meeting and the July 29th, special board meeting. I do not see any errors in the minutes of these previous board meetings. If we look at our finance report, 3.3, I want to draw your attention to the attachment, the copy of state aid. Trevor, if you'll pull that first one up, that would be great. Just want to draw your attention to this first attachment. We've obviously only have one month into our first, first, or beginning of our fiscal year, and you can see that we are $166,000 down in our gross production. There are some increases in our REA tax and school land earnings, but, you know, we've talked about over the previous six to 12 months to a year that that was something we would need to watch. And we're beginning to see that market stabilize somewhat, but it will still be a concern as we move forward. With regard to our investments, all of those are current and up to date. I might mention that our state aid allocation, we received an initial state aid allocation, and it is about $125 less per student than last year. And so, a little bit of concern as we begin to see a decrease in state aid. Right now, they're pointing towards a, an adjustment towards the negative at the midterm. And so, enrollment numbers across the state will have to be reviewed. And so, I might, I might preface that, or I might say that that won't really affect us until the following year. We still are paid off of our high number from last year, but it is something as we begin planning, and we always need to be looking forward, we will begin to see enrollment numbers for next year, and we want to make sure we have the highest enrollment we can get. When we look at 3.4, our activity fund reports, there are no changes to any of the activity funds. All those are in good standing. 3.5, our fundraisers, believe that we have two fundraisers. The first one is our Bug Bites Group for donations at the middle school, and I believe that that is all. My notes are the wrong ones. 3.6, interaccount transfers. We have a interaccount transfer, our baseball team this summer bought the concession stand from the middle school, and this transfer represents that amount that they purchased from the middle school for their baseball games this summer. Are there any questions with the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend it's a freeze.
You want to pay a motion?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda, those items referenced in 3.2 through 3.6.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '21, as referenced in 4.1, the general fund. It's referenced in 4.2, the building fund, as referenced in 4.3, child nutrition fund.
4.1, our general fund, I want to go through a couple of the purchases there and explain the reimbursement process for those. But first, we'll start with purchase order number 166. That is Adventum software. That is a software that we use for elementary and high school students. It's Study Island and Reading Ape. 168 is hand sanitizer that we purchased. 174 from Star Lumber, that's Plexiglas that we use to provide screens for our secretaries and concession areas for this next year. And 183, Jenkins and Price, those are some backpack sprayers that we have purchased. 190, hotspots from T-Mobile for $16,200, and then Chromebook Macs. So all of those that I've mentioned there, those are reimbursable expenses that we used our fairs money for, and we will be reimbursed for those expenses. So back up and look at number, purchase order number 175 for $11,740. That is special education software that we use district-wide. It helps assess and then put our students on a learning pathway. Purchase order number 178, the $19,800, we received a grant that we'll be reimbursed for through, for some curriculum alignment and development in January. And so, once we have that, we'll be reimbursed for it. And then, we also purchase order number 179 for 2,619. We purchased a sprayer specifically for the bus farm, so Mr. Ellis will be disinfecting buses when they return, or when they leave in the morning, and then when they return each evening. Any questions about any of the purchase orders out of the general fund? We don't have any purchase orders out of the building fund or the child nutrition fund this month.
You want to pay a motion? 3.1 is presented.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
I.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Number five, superintendent's report.
We have one resignation to report for the board, Connie Steele. She's going to be a Washington prepay teacher this year, and her husband got a new job in Colorado. We wish Connie the best of luck. We have numerous reassignments that I want to go over with you. Marissa Whiteley will move from Longfellow to the middle school for special education. Kelly Kilman will move from the middle school to Longfellow for special education. Emily Kennedy will move from Longfellow to Alva Middle School to teach language arts. And Ms. Cornelia will move from Washington to Longfellow for second grade. And, you know, we continue to review as we, as enrollment continues. There may be some reassignments that are last minute, but we feel pretty good about where we're at with our teaching staff. For my board communication, just a reminder that our conference in August is canceled. I'll continue to provide you some updates on getting the necessary required board points. I want to thank our administrators again. They have had a long summer and a long six months, really, to be planning and preparing, and they've done an outstanding job. We realize we've got a lot of challenges ahead. I can assure this board, this group is, is up for the challenge. We have been working, Mr. Smith and I and Ms. Martini have been working together to look at how we're going to handle events and how we're going to manage some of those, and we'll be getting those out to the public soon. But we ask everybody to be patient. We're going to be getting some information out in the next two days about our meet the teacher night. And we fully recognize that that is an important night in the life of our parents and our students, and it's not going to look the same. But we are going to have a night where, where our, our students can see the building and can meet the teachers and get some of that necessary paperwork picked up and turned back in. And so, we will get that out the next day or two. And obviously, when we get that out there for any questions, we, we sure want people to, to give us a call because this is new for everybody. And, and things change every day, and we want to be responsive to questions, and we welcome those questions. Last thing I might add, our website has been intermittently down, and that is not something that we have a lot of control on. There's the server for the company that supports our website. With all of this going on, it's had some cyber attacks have taken place, and so they are working their way through that to get our website back up. And so, we will use our social media avenues to communicate until we get our website, website back up and running. That's all I have, Jane.
Number six, items of current business. 6.1, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of a one-year temporary contract to advocate number one, certified teacher for the 2020-21 school year.
Mr. Peely.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Whitney Smith. She has some experience at Schuyler and Ugo, teaching in elementary, second grade. And we had an opening in our pre-K spot, and we feel like she's going to be a great addition to our staff. So I'd recommend that we hire Whitney Smith for pre-K this year.
Want to pay a motion? I'd make the motion that we hire Whitney Smith for pre-K for one-year contract.
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Welcome, Mrs. Smith. And I'm sure we'll need a picture, and this is all said and done, so if you'll hang out a little bit with us. It won't be too long, I think. Will you make a wake, Mary Ellen, or do you want to take a picture now, or? It doesn't matter. We'll just, we'll just let her enjoy the evening with us.
Yeah. It's your birthday party.
Yeah, really. I expect you guys to sing. 6.2, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to advocate number one, certified teacher for the 2021 school year.
Mrs. Tucker.
Karen Lee is no stranger to Alva Public Schools. We are needing a teacher to help us with our option three, full virtual in our elementary schools. We don't want to put more onto an existing teacher in our district. And Karen, we're blessed to still have her in our community and, and willing to come out of retirement, it was a quick retirement, to help us out in a part-time, I'm not sure the full, Mr. Argo would have to answer that, what that looks like, but we're excited to have her, and we, we hope you approve that she can help us out and help our kiddos in that whole, whole virtual option that we're offering this year.
Motion?
Move to approve Karen Lee for employment.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Welcome back. Welcome back. That sounds like Mr. Tucker, but welcome back. Has Chandler retired yet?
Yes.
Kinda, huh?
Sort of. He's going to adjunct.
Well, yes, we're going to keep the photo. 6.3, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to the following bus drivers for the 21, 2021 school year.
So I would recommend to the board that we offer employment to Scott Wall, Steve Gill, Cody Hooper, and Dakota Buckholz for our bus drivers for the 2020-21 school.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
6.4, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the Alva School District handbooks for the 2021 school year.
So I said it a few minutes ago, and say it again, the principals have worked together, have worked well together to put these handbooks, get them ready, and then revise them and change them as the situation dictated. And so, they're all here tonight, and I know you've had an opportunity to review some of those this past month. If you have any questions, they are here to answer any of those. Mr. Peely, Mrs. Tucker, and, and any of you, if you want to mention, maybe, it might be good to mention, starting our day, we're going to change just a little bit about our building's opening. So, in the past, we have opened up the buildings at 7:30, and to try to limit traffic as much as we possibly can, we'll go back to a 7:45 opening. And so, parents will, will need to make adjustments probably to their morning schedules for that. At Washington, we will change our dismissal just a little bit. We'll put pre-K dismissing at 2:50, kindergarten dismissing at 3:00, and first dismissing at 3:10. And in that way, we can maybe limit our crowds at gazebo. And, and then Circle Drive will, will primarily stay the same because we're, once they get in line, there's some people that line up at about 2:00, be the first ones in line. So Circle Drive will still remain the same. And just like with anything, you know, we've not, we've not tried this before. And so, you know, after these first couple of days, we, we fully recognize there may be adjustments that need to be made, and we're going to communicate those to, to those parents. But, you know, the, the idea with everything that we planned is how can we get our students safely back into school and be in school as, as much as possible? Any other questions for the principals?
Mrs. Martini mentioned about lunch for the middle school. Are there any other major things you'd like to highlight?
This will be the first time that I know of that we are splitting up our sixth, seventh, and eighth. And in doing so, we're going to, you know, pull them apart a little bit, and we're going to make sure that there's 30 minutes in between, that the tables can be clean, and we have kind of a, a way that we're going to organize the kids so they're not sitting in the same seats, you know, as the other students. But we're going to make sure that we have the time to go in there and clean everything. And so, we're going to see how it works.
And you have more kids, too, don't you?
Yes, yes, we do have more kids.
Any other questions? Motion to approve these two handbooks. I make the motion we approve the handbooks for the school year, and I'd also like to commend the administration and leadership team for all of their hard work, because this is, almost had to rewrite the silly thing. So, thank you, and thank you for your dedication. We appreciate you.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
6.5, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the revised extra duty assignments for FY '21.
So you'll notice in your revised extra duty assignments, there are four changes in those. Brandon Ellis will be a middle school football assistant. Ty Hooper will be our sixth grade girls' basketball assist, uh, basketball coach, excuse me. And Jack Lawden will be the Alva Middle School softball assistant. You'll also notice that we have highlighted Adam Stewart, and he has had his band camp and has been working with those students over the past year. So I want to thank Ms. Kane, Mr. Hanson, for their time that they've spent working with me on the extra duty schedule. We've worked on it quite a bit, met quite a bit this summer, and so I appreciate their time and effort as we've been able to complete that process. If there are no questions, I would recommend that we approve the revised extra duty assignments for FY '21.
Make the motion we approve the extra duty assignments as referenced in 6.5.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
6.6, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve Brooke Meyer as an adjunct instructor for anatomy and physiology for the 2021 school year.
So this agreement with the Career Tech and with Brooke Meyer, we've been working with them for as long as I can remember. I would recommend with Brooks Lysenger as an EMT that we approve her as an adjunct instructor for anatomy and physiology.
She teaches one hour?
They can teach no more than two to be an adjunct instructor, and I'm not for sure on exactly how many hours she'll be teaching out at the group, but it has to be two or less.
Motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
6.7, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve Dixie Meyer as an adjunct instructor, instructor for two hours of chemistry for the 2021 school year.
So Dixie's background is in nursing, also has a certification in biological sciences. But we will have her teach two hours of chemistry, and I would recommend that we approve her as an adjunct instructor for chemistry.
Motion?
I make the motion that we approve Dixie for this adjunct.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
6.8, discussion with possible board action, vote to accept credits from Northwest Technology Center for students attending Career Tech classes and earning credits in mathematics and/or science for the 2021 school year.
We mentioned last, last week, and last Wednesday, approving our return to learn from how important our partnerships with our university, Northwest, and with our Career Tech art at Alva Public Schools. And this is another example of how partnership. If the board approves this, this allows our students to receive credit at our Career Tech classes for math and science, and I would recommend that approved.
So we...
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
6.9, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following contracts for fiscal year '21. Can we do these all together, or should we do them separately?
We can do all these together.
Okay. 6.9, 6.1, American Fidelity Service Contract, 6.9.2, the City of Alva SRO Contract, 6.9.3, Oklahoma Department of Career Technology Secondary Career and Technology Program Contract, and 6.9.4, Big Five Community Service Agreement.
Okay, so we start with our American Fidelity Service Contract. This is something that we renew each year. They help track our flexible benefits plan with our employees and the annuities that our employees can contribute to. 6.92, our City of Alva SRO Contract, this has been a good program for Alva Public Schools. So we have two SROs, one of them is eight hours a day, one is six hours a day. We share our six-hour SRO with the Career Tech. And like I said, it's been a good program, but we'll do in the next few weeks, we'll sit down with them and begin scheduling out event time and what events that they would be worked at, so they go take those. 6.93, Oklahoma Department of Career Technology Secondary Career and Technology Program Contract. This is our program assistance money that we receive each year to help supplement those programs, not only with salary, but with supplies. 6.94, Big Five Community Service Agreement. This is our agreement with Ed Stark and their program. We not only help service those students in special education, but we also contract out with them to provide meals. Are there any questions about these contracts that we enter into each year? If there are none, I would recommend they're approved.
Make a motion we approve the contracts referenced, the four contracts referenced in 6.9.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
There.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
6.10, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following board policies as referenced.
And so I want to thank Ms. McDermott, Mr. Hanson, has spent a lot of time. Our board manual is, and policy is, is up to date pending approval of these policies. I want to touch on each one of those real quickly. The online instruction, this is a new policy that we've received this year with some new additions to it. Mr. Peely and Ms. Martini have gone through this policy, and it really outlines and goes right along with our virtual policy that was approved. And so, they are the same. FD is the Establishment of Residency Affidavit, and that's really a clerical issue. We have an affidavit online, and we need to change the wording in FD to make that online affidavit appropriate. That is a recommendation from the School Board Association attorney. FDCP, that is a procedure that we just received this summer. A lot of it has to do with the pandemic, and if you'll remember, a part of every report card is chronic absenteeism. And so, we expect that there will be times when students will be absent. This allows us to form a committee and review those absences so that it doesn't count negatively, negatively towards your state report card. Medication administration, medication administering to students, this is to abide by state law. It's just updating our students' ability with the asthma medication. FNCD, that is updating the policy from harassment to bullying. It also uses some of the same terminology that was used in the School Safety and Bullying Prevention Act. Again, that's state law, and so it's a requirement for approval. FNCGA, weapons-free school, this is just to stay compliant with current Oklahoma law along with our suspension of students' policy letter, FOD. FMAA, that is a extracurricular activities, emergency medical services. I want to thank Julie Dennis and our city manager, Angelica Brady, for meeting with me this past week. We are working together to have a plan on file at the central office for our emergency medical services at events. And we've always had good service, and, and they've always done a good job for Alva Public Schools, and so we will continue that same service. FD is a sexual harassment policy. Included with it are incident reports and attachments. This is to stay compliant with any Title IX investigation that's required from the school district, and once again, required by law. Again, I appreciate Mr. Hanson and Ms. McDermott for reviewing these policies and looking them over. And if there are no questions, I would recommend they're approved. Make the motion that we approve these policies.
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Argo, for all the work you do. And it's been, there's been a tremendous amount of work. He's went completely through things, changed so many things, and updated so many things. It's been more than a full-time job, and a full-time job. Thank you. New business?
There is none.
Proposed executive session to discuss AEA negotiations for 2021. Propose executive session to discuss AEA negotiations for 25 Oklahoma State statutes, 307B2. Let's take a vote to convene into executive session. Make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.